Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. Welcome to the City of Rochester Planning Commission. This is our regular meeting of May 3, 2021. Before we begin, I just want to repeat the message we do every week. This meeting is virtual. We're still permitted under the state law to continue to meet in a virtual fashion. And for everyone who's participating in the meeting or watching, the actions that may be taken by the planning commission this evening are legal. They count. This is a window in time where you don't have to be physically present at a meeting to take votes and so it continues in that fashion. For those watching us on Community TV, you'll see a phone number displayed at the bottom. If you wish to participate in any way on any of the subjects for the meeting tonight, just call that number and you'll be connected with Sienna, who you see here on the screen. And at the appropriate time, she'll she'll patch you in and you'll be able to talk directly to the commission. So with that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask the city manager to do the pledge of allegiance.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good to catch people off guard every now and then. Number three is public comment. And first ask Sienna if you have any written or electronic communications from anyone who wishes to speak.
We do not.
Okay, we'll do that again later in the meeting. Get to remind people, if you have comments, feel free to call that number. The technology works well. We've done it several times. So feel free to give us a call and let us know what's on your mind. Item number four.
McGee, we haven't had a whole call. I'm sorry.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, madam?
Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord. Mayor Mixon.
Here.
City Councilmember and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gosson. It's expected. Commissioner Hauser.
Gasson just joined, Maureen.
Okay. Commissioner Hauser.
I'm here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stone.
Here.
Thank you very much. David, are you with us? I see your I see your screen here.
I am, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, my minor tardiness, but I am here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
You as well. Thank you.
Maureen, sorry for getting out of order there. Too many other things I'm yakking about here. The the next item is number four, approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of April 22, 2021. And I'd ask the commissioners if you have any additions, deletions, corrections, et cetera. And if not, we would entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Well, the mayor's moved. Do we have support?
Or.
And it's supported by Dean.
Yes.
Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Clark Martin.
Yes.
Gosson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lord.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item is number five, consideration of an amendment revisions to the original approved site plan for the facade renovations for the residential apartments located at 134 West University Drive. Vidia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The planning commission had granted site plan and special exception approval for the conversion of existing office spaces to apartments at an existing building at its meeting held on July 23, 2020. The subject site you're all familiar with is on the north side of West University, west of Main Street intersection and is zone CBD, which is the central business district. During the course of construction, the applicant had to make some revisions to the plans because of which they had to come back before you seeking amended site plan approval. Now, the significant change in the plan is the window wells. For a cover letter that has been submitted by the applicant, I quote, "Based on the subgrade foundation conditions and existing tenant entrances at ground level," those quotes, "the final window well locations on the building have been changed." I will pull up a copy of the plan for you to see. So the applicant says, if you look at this plan, all the window wells that are shown in red. In my letter, it says gray because the copy I got was not in color. So these window wells were built as shown on the plan. Everything that is shown on white was eliminated because of conflicts based upon the subgrade and based upon the foundation. For the applicant, they had to delete only, they had to relocate one window well that conflicted with the West University, which is the south facade. And pre additional, I'm sorry, they had to eliminate only one of those window wells for the entrance to the tenant space occupied by recipes. The floor plan that is submitted actually shows a lot more than just one or two window wells being eliminated. In addition to the elimination that the applicant had listed, the floor plan shows three additional window wells being eliminated on this one was shifted here. These three window wells were eliminated and these three window wells were also eliminated. So there are several additional window wells also being eliminated. For the applicant, each unit is required to provide two means of egress in order to meet the state building codes. We see that Studio 105 and Studio Unit 107 both have only one window well for egress when previously two were shown. So I'm not sure if this still meet. This is Studio Unit 107. As you can see, these two window wells got eliminated. So it's got only one means of egress right now. Studio Unit 105, I believe, is this one. This window well is there. This window well got eliminated. So it's got only one window well. So the applicant's architect needs to confirm whether it still meets the building code requirements for two means of egress. The elimination of these window wells, because it's at subgrade, is not going to cause significant difference to the building elevation. However, a copy of an updated elevation should have been submitted as part of the amended site plan. Because when a site plan is amended, it replaces the original copy of the plan in the files as the correct elevation that it will be inspected in based on in the future. The changes proposed by the applicant are based on field conditions and they are reasonable. We do understand sometimes this change when construction is being done in field. However, when submitting for an amended site plan approval, which impacts the exterior of the building and updated full set should be submitted for the city records. We do recommend that the planning commission grant amended site plan approval for the proposed changes to the floor plan for 134 West University Drive. Subject to confirmation that Studio Units 105 and 107 meet building code requirements for egress and revised facade elevations are submitted showing elimination of the window wells. I would hope the architect has bought an updated elevation for you to see tonight so that you can make sure that there's no significant modification to the facade on the studio. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the planner?
Dennis, I have one. This is Matt talking.
Go ahead, Matt.
Have these modifications already been made to the building?
I think the applicant will have to clarify that. These show as built. So I'm assuming the modification for the window wells is already in place.
Vidia, the I'm trying to see how it was stated here, but do we actually know what they encountered that prevent this from happening? That prevent them from building it as the site plan was approved?
Yes, I believe the window well that was over here in front on West University, these two had to be eliminated because it was affecting the window wells were affecting the entrance into the existing recipes business, the restaurant that is located on the main floor. So those window wells had to be removed. And I'm not sure for the reason for elimination of this, I believe it's got something to do with when they dug up the foundation and the subgrade elevation. I'm sure the applicant's architect, Mr. Satsma, will be able to explain that better.
Okay. Any other questions for Vidia?
This is Eric, just a quick one. So as I'm assuming the building department has seen these changes and approved them. Is that right?
Nick would have to provide insight on that. I'm not sure. I'm assuming the building department has seen it, but I'm not sure of it.
Yeah, to Sienna, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as I know, Randy basically said that they had to come back to the planning commission. He said that he would approve. I know they submitted the plans to Randy, but I'm not at all sure if he approved it. I think he's waiting on the planning commission to approve it before he proceeds.
Even though it's built. Well, I guess we'll find out. You need to ask the architect these questions. Yeah.
Okay, without further ado, who is the architect on the projects? Is it Mr. Michikowski?
No, Robert.
Yeah, it's me, Robert Santner from Yamazaki Architects.
Okay, Robert, hi. Welcome to this evening. Glad you can be here. Why don't you take take the floor and explain what's going on here?
Sure, the the units that were identified with one means of ingress are studio units. The first means is actually to the corridor, which is the first means of egress from the unit. The second means is through the window well unit. So all units comply with the building code, and this has been discussed and reviewed with the building department. So the the changes to the window well units are really just a function of as-built condition. The base drawings had a mislocated entry for recipes which interfered with the excavation, one of the wells, which then pinched on the other well and created a problem which would have shifted to an obstruction that was unforeseen below grade. There was a lot of unforeseen foundation issues around the property. And so it caused us to shift slightly some of these locations or make them unable to be located in the position even in a shifted location because of the way the foundation was constructed. There is also some window well units which are not necessary for egress where there are existing windows. And on the north elevation, the three, the northeast corner there, there is actually existing windows. They're just not extending to the height which would qualify them for egress units. So the units are still achieving daylight from those existing locations. That also occurs on the east and west sides of that wing. So the just in going through and further refining this with the building department, the egress units, because of the cost of the obstructions to excavate and the difficulty in locating the units, the number of egress wells were reduced to avoid those obstructions. So I mean, that's the the long and short of it, I guess, that once we got into it and got into the excavation, there was quite a bit of of difficulty in excavating to the depths that were required to install these units.
Have an updated elevation, Mr. Sackner?
No, I would, I don't have an updated elevation. I can prepare one and submit it to the building department or the planning commission. But I don't have an updated elevation showing the relocated wells because they're they are below grade. But I have them actually dotted in. It would take me a few hours to do that and I can submit it for information.
Is any of this being done for aesthetic purposes or budgetary purposes?
There's there's a only there are some alignments because there are no as-built drawings. Some of the alignment, the movements, if it wasn't a foundation issue, was to align with windows that are already in line and with the existing windows on the facade so that they weren't shifted. So when when the building was, the base drawings that were used, there were some windows that were mislocated. And so those wells had to shift along with the actual opening. So there was some of that that occurred. And those are indicated with the arrows that are shifting on the west side of the north wing.
Would you put the drawing back up?
Along the bottom here.
Along along the bottom, I think.
There's an ellipse.
Right there, that window right there.
Yep.
It looks like 104. Go back to looks like the bedroom in 104 has no means is does not have two means of egress. If you remove that.
No, the unit requires the means of egress, not the bedroom.
Two means.
The unit requires two means of egress.
Okay, go to that bedroom in 104. So that would be the further up, the next, is that a bedroom? Yeah, there.
No.
No, on the wall where that white box window has been removed. Is that a bedroom?
It's not a bedroom. It could be used as a bedroom by someone, but it's not a required means of egress, actually.
So it's not the declared bedroom?
It's it's not a it's not a declared bedroom.
So it could not legally be used as a bedroom because it does not have two means.
Mr. Santner is stating that egress is required for the unit, not for a bedroom.
Right. I think it's required for a bedroom, but I'm not the building inspector.
Yeah, it's these smaller arrows show that the window wells have been shifted, I believe.
I have to say I'm concerned about this. Not because I'm a builder or an inspector, but I do have a background, a significant background in this stuff. And I worry about some of this stuff. So I'm asking that we have a statement from the building inspector that this flies before we can do this.
Chairman McGee.
Yes.
Um, just a quick question. This is Sarah. I'm looking at, I think it's Unit 106, right where we were looking at those window wells towards the bottom. The egress window that is in that kitchen area, it appears to be partially, I'm not sure how blocked it'll be by the refrigerator. Is, I mean, would that be an issue?
It would be an issue, but it's not blocked. In fact, it may be a graphic issue for us. The window well was shifted to the next window unit. In fact, it's not blocked by the refrigerator.
That's that's the problem I have is this drawing does not answer our questions.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Christian.
Christian. Yeah, sure. And I think I've got the same concerns as as you might have. And and Sarah, if you look at 104, it's labeled a two-bedroom unit. And the architect had indicated, you know, it's not designated a bedroom, but it could be used. I would clearly say that it is designated a bedroom if it's a two-bedroom and it identifies that room. And so I think until there's a definitive answer as to whether or not an egress window is required in a bedroom, I think that ought to be the the condition before any further discussion.
You know that it will be used as a bedroom.
Well, yeah, it's listed as a two-bedroom unit.
I don't know if you can hear me or see me.
I can hear you, Doctor.
Okay, thank you very much.
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. At least I succeeded with something here. The code has been reviewed. A two-bedroom needs to have two egress windows. And it doesn't matter that they are in the bedrooms. At least one anyhow is in the bedroom. The other one can be any other place.
Doctor Talan.
Yes, sir.
Now, I I don't want that information from you. I want it from the licensed building inspector. And and I cannot support this until I see it from the building inspector. There are too many questions here.
That's fine, but we we have checked the code. The architect checked the code and he confirmed it to me.
I remember hearing about it with Randy, with the building department.
Yeah. And as far as Unit 104 in particular, and particularly 106, if we put these egress windows to the souths, there is a 400 volt electrical wire coming from the pole there. And actually, we did cut that wire and we had to repair. So it is not by fantasy or not spending money that we were able to achieve the pattern you see here. Every one that was eliminated is because of the problems that it showed. We did dig all the way. And we, there were many spots where we had to go 12 feet deep to be able to make the egress windows legal, i.e. less than 44 inches above the basement ground. So everything, a one-bedroom unit needs to have one egress. Two-bedroom units need to have two egress wells. That's exactly what these plans show. And we did talk to Randy from the building department as well as Robert assured me that he reviewed the codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I I guess I got a couple of questions. First one, just just kind of procedural. Wouldn't it make sense and when we're looking at something like this that that has very definitive building code issues involving the decision-making process to have the building inspector at our meeting so that we could clarify this on the spot? Just just a thought. Also, I guess if I could ask about it's very difficult for me to read these on my printed copies or even on the screen here. I think it's 105, the Unit 105, that the top right, you, yeah, that one there. Am I not hearing that we're supposed to have two egresses per unit?
The corridor is one means of egress and the window well is the second means of egress. Even in a studio unit, yes, you're right.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I just note that all of us can say what we think it might be, but it's the building inspector who has to tell us what is. And this document here for me is very confusing and doesn't answer the questions that I have. And I'm I'm reluctant to authorize for my vote this to proceed on that basis. The floor is open, Commissioners.
Chairman, this is Christian Hauser. I would agree with you. I think it's a pretty easy solution just to have someone from the city, a building official come and say, yep, it's good. And then I think I would be persuaded to move forward with it. But until then, I have a substantial amount of reluctance, I think, sharing the same concerns you have. I know I'm, I don't want to get in a situation where we approve something and it's not up to code and then we're in a bigger mess. So I would make myself available for any next meeting as soon as it could happen to review it and hopefully get this thing back on track.
And Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question. It's kind of a repeated prior prior question. Is this construction already complete? I don't know if I heard the answer to that.
Yes, it is complete.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The exterior, this is Clark Martin. The exterior is complete. Are the interior walls and everything complete?
Yes. Yes.
It's my understanding, and again, we'd have to get this clarified by the building inspector. But it's my understanding that all bedrooms have to have an egress window if they're below grade.
David Gasson, are you still with us?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Your expertise would be helpful.
Unfortunately, this is a building type that I can't speak with absolute authority on. I do this kind of work, but not frequent enough to be able to say one way or the other. If I might add something to this. This, you know, this is an existing building that's quite quite old and there were a lot of, we're sprinkling the building. The doctor has gone to the point of sprinkling the building. That affects other aspects of this. So there's a lot of, it's not a writ straight interpretation of the code when we're doing this. There's a lot of additional features to the building that allow this condition to happen. It's not always that sleeping rooms have egress. Each sleeping room has an egress unit. It depends on the construction type and other uses within the building and other means of egress. So, but again, I apologize for not addressing this issue. I was under the impression that we were talking about location of window walls as it relates to the site plan and that the building official had already opined on the sufficiency of our egress. And so I'm, I apologize for not bringing further documentation to that effect.
That's our problem, Robert. We have nothing. We have nothing other than, your honor.
Mr. Chairman, I took a moment to just quickly look at the Rochester, City of Rochester Technical Codes. And it says, egress windows are required in all bedrooms, including any located in the basement. They're also required for any habitable space below grade. This requirement applies to all newly constructed and remodeled sleeping rooms. So again, I think I'm leaning even more towards, let's just have the building official take a look. And if he gives it the thumbs up or she gives it the thumbs up, then then that's fine. If not, then we'll have to 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 address this issue further.
Blaine?
Mr. Chairman, I guess another way to also look at this is potentially to do it contingent upon. So if the commission is really just waiting for the, I guess, thumbs up from our building official and it's in the code and he is okay, I believe the commission could put that as a contingency. And long as it is okay, then he he would be able to confirm that. I would provide that in writing to the commission. But that would be, you know, another option for the commission if that's the only I guess, question or challenge at this this time.
Thanks, Blaine. I know we can do that. When when I got on the commission, that was being done quite regularly where we would approve things on the if comes, so to speak. And there were times when that did not occur, the things that were put in. Nick, you're aware of this as well. And so I've I've been reluctant to go forward with that kind of an approach to doing business. I know we can add that tonight.
Dennis, I would like to note, though, this information was submitted to Randy prior to being included in this, the planning commission packet. So Randy has seen it. The drawings that were presented before you, also internally, normally when I get any site plan, I submit it and distribute it to all of the departments, fire, police, you know, et cetera. So he did see this. I did call him to try to get a hold of him, but he did not answer. So if you do, if you all don't mind approving, you know, the same thing that Blaine said, contingent upon what the building official says, I can gladly have him draw up a letter and provide that to you as well. But it's up to you guys what action you'd like to take. But I just wanted to let you guys know that he did receive the same information that you are looking at.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I guess I'm a little concerned after hearing at least Commissioner Hauser's reading of the ordinance that our building inspector would somehow approve this. It seems pretty black and white. So I know we can vote to approve this and move it forward with a contingency, but still concerning to me if it were to get built as it's planned.
That's that's precisely my problem. We're not talking about a facade matter here. This is a life safety issue. And these are being built quickly and they're going to hit the market soon. I'm sure they're going to be very, very popular. I, you know, we've complimented the doctor on his insight in doing this with his property. So that's why I'm reluctant to put my my stamp of approval on it absent any kind of a document from from the building inspector, where very clearly we know that they're being marketed as two bedrooms. And at least one of the bedrooms in two of the units do do not have a window exit.
Mr. Chairman, this is Christian. I guess I would, you know, if it were for motion purposes, would it be to to table this until the building official has had an opportunity to review and either given its approval or declined?
What are the, what are the rest of you folks think in terms of a contingency here?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
So.
We're just waiting on the building inspector? Is that?
Really, we are, yeah. We, we, the commission don't have any documentation that. You know, it's a change. It's not the original site plan. That's already approved. And. It's a change that involves a life safety issue. And enough of us know. That that's a concern. We just don't want to go forward on. Things that have been said when we don't have anything in writing.
Well, I guess I would suggest that. I mean, one, maybe we. Try to get ahold of him again in the next. Ten or fifteen minutes if he's, if he's looked at it. And then I guess if not, then if there's concern. We can either wait for the two weeks for the next meeting or. Um. Have a special meeting, um. You know, rather quickly since we're still online, we, we could, we could try to do that if the applicant needs to move forward.
Nick, can you, uh, can you, uh, join in here relative to? Em, emotion that might get approved that had a contingency in it? And how that will be, how that will be enforced, so to speak?
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is no matter. Randy's got to sign off on no matter what. So. If you sign on this one, if you sign with the contingency and he doesn't sign off. And they've got to redo it again. So I don't see any harm in this one. Sign off contingent on. I know that he's looked at it. He doesn't work on Mondays. He's probably coming back from. Alpena. So otherwise he's always available, but. Um. He should have been asked to come to the meeting. When you guys review these. Stuff like this, I would have wanted them in the meeting or a formal request, but that's neither here nor there, but. Um. On this, a contingency approval wouldn't be any different than the answer you're going to get in two weeks at the next meeting. If we own the second meeting in May, so. I, I'm okay with the contingency because it won't change his view on that. And, and what Robert says true because it's sprinkled because there's. It's not just a straight up. Um, egress window situation in every bedroom. I'm, I'm almost positive, but you know, I'm not the building official. Quickly opine as to what the answer. And we'll have an answer. If it meets all requirements, then it's approved and off he goes. That, that's how I would do it.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sarah, Sarah, you were first, sir.
Uh, so I'm actually, I'm reading on the city website as well. You go to the building department and then you go to technical notes. It very clearly lays out egress windows and requirements. So based on what's on, on our city website, I'm inclined not to move this forward. Until. The building inspector says otherwise.
What about a contingent, uh, a, a motion with a contingency in it that? We can rely on Nick and, uh, Blaine to. Uh, run interference for us with the building inspector.
I mean, we could, but. The web, I mean, our website states that you have to have an egress window.
Yeah.
That, that also, that doesn't take into account sprinklers or that's just a general statement. It's the building code that matters. Randy never varies from the building code. There's an answer, yes or no. So no, you're going to get the same answer as soon as we talk to him. He'll have known this already. So. Again, you can wait through two weeks, whatever it is, three weeks, but. And, and that's fine, but, uh. The answer won't change. What he's going to answer. And Robert's talked to him, sure.
Right. We've reviewed the code, specific code sections.
I know they've been talking about this a lot before this came here.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Doctor, let, let out of the commissioner's finish here now. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk.
Yeah.
Chairman.
Mr. Lord.
Uh. I, I tend to, uh, agree with. Um, making a motion with a contingency here. Um. Because I, it's just, you know, that. We're, 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 we're talking about one issue. That's going to be resolved as to whether or not it's been reviewed by the building official. To conform with code or not. It's a yes or no answer. Um, I don't know why that we would need to go back. To us or. You know, delay that any further unless anybody has other issues outside of, you know, from a site planning perspective. Which, which I haven't heard yet, but I, I don't think any of us are really qualified to. Uh, give our opinion necessarily on the, on the code. I think we need to leave that to the building official. Um, I would certainly hope that since these things are constructed already, that's already happened. Um, and I suspect the case, but maybe there was no review letter issued. It would have been nice if there was, that was in our packet. Um. Or if the building official was here to, to speak up on it, but my assumption is that that's happened. Um, and if it hasn't, then. It'll, it'll come back, but, but I'm okay with the condition.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I guess, uh. I, I'm, I'm still concerned with the fact that it pretty clearly states from what we're hearing that, uh. We need to have an egress window in that bedroom. Um. I would feel much more comfortable if we had documentation which showed. The part of the ordinance that allows for that not to be the case. Um. It would needs to be something that's contradictory to what we're hearing. Um. And I guess it boils down to, I'm not sure that I trust. Uh, the building. Inspector to make the right call on this. Without seeing that documentation myself. And. I. I get that, you know, we're not qualified, but. If it's there, if it's simply yes or no, then show me the documentation at this point. It's not something we normally usually review. But it's in front of us now and I have that question and I have that concern. This is a situation of life or death and. A liability issue. If we don't get this right and something happens and someone were to die in that bedroom. Um. That would be a big problem if we somehow approve this without, uh, proper legal, uh, standing.
That's, that's kind of how I see this, Dean. It's, this is not the site plan review. That was all looked at before. This is a revision of the site plan. So it puts it into a different category here. And that's why I. You know, when, when you see changes come and there's not a full re-review. It's concerning to me without seeing anything in writing. Well, the floor is open if anyone would like to make a motion.
This is, uh, Christian Hauser. I'd like to make a motion to table this until the, uh, building official has had an opportunity to review. And then present his findings to the, uh, commission.
For. What? Who is the support?
Dean.
Dean, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion?
Do you have a question? So.
Yes.
The. So. So, so the construction, this construction is done. Uh, the architect says.
Yes.
So. We're not really holding up anything, are we? Or are we? Um.
Occupancy.
I think a C O four cannot be issued till amended site plan is granted because the building. Once you grant amended site plan approval, the building official will finally sign off on it. And only then can a certificate of occupancy issue or.
Okay.
We're not holding up any construction, but probably marketing and occupancy, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd be willing to. You know, if, if that, if the applicant considers it a major issue on timing, I'd be willing to meet. Um. You know, assuming if other people are willing to, to.
I, I would also, I mean, we can do it by, we can do it by video. It could be put together very quickly. So.
Yeah.
I, I would meet tomorrow if it was the issue tomorrow. I mean, as soon as possible. Yeah, there's no, I'm not trying to hold this up two weeks.
You just need confirmation from the building.
The chair.
So, uh, uh, just a minute, Viddy, would you put that in, Christian? Add that to your. Motion?
Sure. Let me see if I can give it another stab here. I would, uh, like to make a motion to adjourn. And table this issue until the building official has had an opportunity to review and present the board, the commission with its findings. And I would further add that, uh, uh, commission make itself available at the earliest opportunity. Once the building official has made his or her determination to make a decision on this matter.
Dean, can you support that?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Vidya, sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to know if the board also wants a clarification on the code that Mr. Hauser and Miss King read out in. The city's code. So you want a clarification from the building official as.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes. That's the whole point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we want him to do, give us, give us his answer and tell us why.
It's been marked, they're both marketed as two bedroom units. It shows two spaces. It could be bedrooms. In each space, one of them does not have an egress one. So. If that's permitted in the code somehow or another, explain it to us. Okay, could we have the roll call, please?
Certainly, Hauser?
Uh, yes.
Babacca?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Rick Martin?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Gassen?
Yes.
Ing?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the earliest, uh, we could have the meeting would be on Thursday to meet the Open Meetings Act and be able to publicize it. Okay, I know, I know the, um. Building official will be in the office tomorrow.
So if you can, uh. You know, quickly get to us with, uh. Uh, emails will all confirm to you, we can meet, you can get it posted and we'll run with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Doctor.
To give me the opportunity to talk. Thank you to all of you. Two things. We have twenty seven units. Nineteen are two bedrooms. Eight are one bedroom. G M F Group Management Facilities, a great construction company. As they were building these egress things. Got approval. From. Uh. The building official. And assured me that they had the approval. He checked them all. It wasn't final, of course, because nothing is final till we. Put the dirt back in place. But I wouldn't have let them go any step. More without the approval of the city and the building inspector. That's one. Two. Like I stated. The initial. Plan was theoretical. We did. Still give two. Egress. Windows and wells. To the two bedrooms and one to those that have one bedroom. And the limitations were really. The anatomy. What was going on on site? Several of those were like I stated on. Electrical wires or the entrances to businesses like Ascension Capital or Recipes. Or others otherwise. And to accommodate many other things. So. You know, we have. And. I'm being very transparent and sincere with you that this is what my ears heard. And that's what my contractor. Did do and say to me. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I, I hope you also appreciate though, Doctor, that. You know, this is an official legal board and each of us as individuals. Have a responsibility. To look at these things and, and use our best judgment and. For a slight delay on a matter of life safety, which this is. Um, you know, these people are going the long mile. I mean, they all have. Professional lives away from here. They have to be concerned about these things. They have to be concerned about whoever lives in those bedrooms. So. I think we'll get this resolved. I'm sorry that it, it caused a bit of a delay, but I think in the end. The project is better for it. And again, we, we think you're going to be eminently successful with it.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item number six, consideration of a site plan and special exception. For the expansion of the second floor. And front facade to the retail residential development. Located at four oh seven South Main Street. Vidya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, at the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal for Mr. Schneider on behalf of. Steve Majowski to construct a full second story on an existing building with a partial second story. The proposed use of the new addition is a two-bedroom apartment. The existing ground floor is being used for a retail business. You're all very familiar with this site. It's on the west side of Main Street between West Hall and West University Drive. And is located in the central business district. Upper story apartments are permitted as a special exception use in this particular district. If you recollect, you did review this. An exactly similar project in twenty nineteen and you did grant approval. For an efficiency unit and an office to be located in this area. It appears that. Since then, the property has changed ownership. Mr. Majowski has. Purchased the property and now his proposal is to just have an apartment in the upper floor. No office space. We have reviewed the preliminary plan and I shall share it on the screen. There you go. So. The preliminary plan basically just outlines a few additional, uh, items that need addressed before the project comes back. Uh, this is presented as the site plan. The site plan needs to be extended a little bit in order to show the sidewalk along Main Street. And also needs to show the entire width of the alley because. Site is, has to be viewed in relation to its surroundings, not in isolation of it. The site plan does need to include parking calculations for the existing retail use and the proposed apartment use. If the apartment is not essentially increasing the number of units or retail space, no additional parking will be required. Because the site was grandfathered in and as long as they are not increasing the intensity of the use. No additional parking will be required. However, the data needs to be noted on the plan. The floor plan needs to include the entire main floor and the floor above to show all the access. Tierways and doorways function. I mean, what is the connection? From the existing retail floor to upstairs is upstairs apartment access limited only from the rear. So the clarification needs to be made. The floor plan shows no windows. This is the floor plan. So the floor plan shows no windows on the south facade at all. There's an existing building here. There is no windows and a single window on the north facade. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at it upside down. Okay, this is the north facade. This is the south facade. No windows on the south facade. A single window on the north facade. The bedroom on this site appears to have an egress patio shown over here. Um. My concern is once again, like the previous one. The existing building over here is currently single story. So if this gets built as a full second story. What happens to the egress patio and what happens to this window? Uh, how does this apartment unit meet the building code requirements if this side building also goes to a two-story structure? Proposed method of crash removal from the site must be addressed. Elevations have been provided for the front and rear. The partial second story elevation also needs to be shown. So the north and the south facade elevation also provided. There is something labeled here called rear parapet roofing membrane. I'm not exactly sure what that material is. So clarification is required in that regard. Information regarding lighting for the front and rear facades. There's no landscape proposed at this time. It is in downtown. So our recommendation has been consistent for all downtown properties. To add large planters that are already existing street scape elements. However, a large planter with seasonal flowers. Or other such amenity can relieve the. Mass of the building and add some color and improve street appearance to it. And also clarification if any additional signage is being proposed since the facade has been done. Now, the proposal does involve extensive renovations to the facade. And the applicant has submitted historic images of this building. And you previously approved this in twenty nineteen. The applicant at the time was not proposing any major exterior facade renovations. It only had to do with cleanup of the brick. And painting, but in this case, the applicant is actually attempting to restore the historic facade of the building on Main Street. There are black and white images in your packet which actually show. What the, uh, building looked like then and applicants attempt to recreate this. And the rear building materials and color palette is also kept in such a manner that it matches up the fun. We believe the facade renovations proposed are extremely attractive, provided the applicant can address the concerns with regard to. How the apartment unit will meet the building code requirements. Provided the applicant, uh, submits the information that we have just requested. We would recommend that you place it for consideration of, uh. Special exception approval and site plan approval. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Vidya? What happens if, uh? It's rented out and five years from now, the. Buildings on the, the, uh, is at the north side, they decide to do the same thing. Does it have to be vacated as a? As an apartment?
Mr. Schneider will have to answer that question. That, that's what I was wondering because if the building to the north also becomes a full two-story building. This window will go and the egress to the bedroom will go. So the only means of entry and exit. Into this apartment will be to the. Rear patio. I mean. rear patio. I mean, you come up here, this is the door. So it'd be the only means of ingress and egress into this unit. So, and there will be a stairway down here. So maybe, uh, Mr. Schneider can address that concern.
This, this is Steve Mikowski. I just want to start out. Uh, Greg will answer the questions on the bedrooms there. I think we have that in the plan that both will have the proper egress uh, available, whether there's a second building built next to it or not. Um, but first, my name is Steve Mikowski. I'm the owner of Rochester Sports Cars and Removilia. Um, we've been in business since twenty fourteen. And as you mentioned, there was a, another investor group looking at purchasing this building. And due to some of the COVID and economic issues, their financing got slowed down and it ended up, I took the opportunity to purchase the building to continue to house my business back in August twenty twenty. And that's why we're here today to bring forward a plan to turn the upstairs, uh, into a, uh, commercial apart, uh, an apartment. So residential, um, living, a single apartment, we felt was the best use. And we did some benchmarking of some of the other living spaces around here and we think we're going to have a really nice space overall. Um, I've been in the car business since twenty fourteen and, uh, spent my career in the corporate world and opened this business, uh, back then. I chose downtown Rochester, uh, due to kind of having an instant marketing plan, having all the attraction of the area, families going by. So I've been a member of the Rochester community for thirty years and look forward to really doing some work on the front of the building to get it up to par with, uh, some of the nicer buildings down here in Rochester. And on some of the questions that you had about egress, uh, we'll let Greg get into those details. Greg owns Pink Reconstruction. He'll be doing the, uh, contracting of the renovation work in the upstairs area and downstairs.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Mr. Schneider.
Um, did Vidya, was Vidya done? Did Vidya have any additional question, uh, additional comments before I start speaking?
No, I'm done, Mr. Schneider. Please go ahead and explain the project.
Good to see you, sir. We haven't seen you at a meeting for a while.
Was, is that a good thing? Now, it's, it's a pleasure to be back. Um, good to see all you guys. Um, so initially, uh, uh, it was, we were looking at it. Uh, it's currently was segregated into two apartment buildings, uh, with no major renovation for probably who knows, fifty years, uh, based off the look of it. Uh, very little has been done inside the structure. Um, so where you see the egress patio, um, on the bottom there, that is designed for future construction of if, if the, uh, land, landowner to the north decides to go with a, um, second-story building, uh, that would still meet code. Uh, we would have to, eh, put in, um, a ladder system. Um, if they, if that wall does get blocked in, we'd have to put a ladder system so they'd have to go over the roof. Uh, for that to be maintained, a two-bedroom unit. Um, the master bedroom has, has egress out the back with their windows. Um, and, uh, then we have two additional egresses, uh, one in the front and one in the back. Um, we do have an existing window, uh, in the kitchen. Um, the, you can see where on the plan, you can see um, where the existing windows prior, uh, have been. Um, so if you see the small squares on the northern part there, one, two, three, four, four, four windows that have been blocked in at some point in time. Um, the intent is that, um, we would like to open those up, at least two of those up. Um, now as a request. Um, they have never been blocked in fully. In fact, the, the, there's only one layer of brick there now, um, and those, those existing window wells or window holes um, have been boarded over with a piece of plywood. Um, and that, those wall, the walls, uh, for the, for the building are three courses deep. Um, so it's a fairly thick wall. Um, and then currently the, the current windows or the windows that have been blocked only have one facade, uh, one layer of brick as of it, as of now. Um, is by understanding, talking to the city, that, uh, we can get an agreement. Um, that, that if, if the property owners build, uh, up and we lose our win, that we would lose our windows, um, and that we have no uh, long-term rights to those windows or openings, uh, because it is a zero lot line. Um, and I believe it's been done before in the city. Um, additionally, the patio egress has currently been approved within the city. It's the, uh, the building for the um, it's the wine shop with the balcony on the front over on, I think, third, just south, uh, north of Third Street. Has an additional, you know, a, a setup, egress setup, just like that for their upstairs residents. Um, also. So that's a pretty common, um, uh, a pretty common solution to maintain a two-bedroom. Um, if codes change at some point in time, um, and they do build a second story on the property north, uh, we could, the most that would happen with that bedroom would have to be, uh, removed as an additional bedroom. Um, uh, so, so I'm only, so in that egress window also is at the current end of the, of the building, the existing building today. So that's, that's existing as of today, where that wall and window penetration is right now or door penetrations. Do you have any additional questions? We can go out, we can talk about the front facade too. The front facade will be replaced, uh, will maintain the will maintain the look and character of the, uh, current building. Uh, the intention is to, uh, strip a, the first layer brick down and re-brick it uh, in the same character of the historical photograph. We're adding limestone to the front. Um, we're adding limestone to the, um, uh, cornice on the top. And for the eyebrow window, we're adding limestone up there too, which is currently from the pictures you can see is just a brick detail right now. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna open those windows to the full height and, uh, add limestone to those. So it'll bring up the, the update, the, um, overall look. Um, but still maintain the historical characteristics of the building.
So how does that, uh, patio well work? That, that would get the occupant up to the roof? And that would be their sufficient safety exit?
That is correct. So right now we have access to the building on the north. So it would be eh, as, as the current situation is right now. Um, if there was a fire in the building, uh, they could, they would exit out of the egress window, um, and literally step down onto the roof uh, to the north. And they would be able to exit off, out of the back. Um, and then, uh, if, so if, if at some point in time, uh, a second floor is put onto that building, um, that obviously that egress would be blocked off right there. Um, and then we'd, uh, a ladder would have to be, uh, added to get to the rough access. Uh, to get to the flat roof above. To maintain it as a, as a, uh, a viable egress. Just, just like what you're looking at, doctors. Instead of underground, you're basically going, you know, you'd still have access to get up to the, to the ground level. You, you'd get a ladder and, and climb up to get to the rough access.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Schneider?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question regarding that last conversation. So help me with this then. If they, if they step down onto the adjacent roof, um, there's some sort of ladder from that adjacent roof to the ground that they could access or would they be relying on somebody bringing a ladder for them?
Uh, I'll be honest with you, we, we don't have any, we don't have any, um, act, we have not addressed any ladders from the ladder, uh, from the uh, uh, on the plans uh, to get down, uh, access could be gained, uh, we could add the, uh, ac- access could be gained to the, the staircase back staircase pad, um, coming up from the ground level. So if you go to the floor plan, see the staircase going up, there would be a, a roof hatch uh, accessing down to the, down to the, uh, uh, staircase in the back. So if you look at the main, existing main floor there, that staircase there, above it would be a hatch.
I, I'm, I'm asking about the adjac, if they're on the adjacent roof, how would they get over to the stairway?
But they'd have to jump down at this point in time. Or get onto their balcony, um, and get through the building that way, depending on where a fire was.
Yeah, if there's a fire that's taken up both, there, then they're stuck on top of a burning building with no way to get out. Just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm only being told what the architect tells me that this is, this meets the code. The egress, the egress is to get out of the building. Um, and then, and we're providing the e, the egress out of the building.
So again, it's, you know, it's a building official thing.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to get clarification for the next meeting since we have to come for next meeting. Um, on what the requirement would be.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to leave somebody stranded on a rooftop of a possibly burning building.
Probably not a good idea.
Any other question? It's a great-looking apartment. I suspect you'll have competition for it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Steve has, uh, put a lot of effort and, uh, thought into this, him and his wife, um, on what they wanted. Um, I think they've done a lot of significant research. Um, there's not a lot of higher-end, um, uh, residential units in downtown. There's a lot of older studio-type places, things like that, uh, with available parking, um, to, uh, on-site. So there's, it's, he has a unique piece of property that it doesn't go from property line to property line where he can actually allow for a parking site for the, for the unit. Um, and, and we're decreasing density too. It was originally a two-unit and it's going down to a one-unit.
What's in the back and the way of parking? Uh, I can't tell from
Uh, cur- currently there's, uh, it's designated by the city for, I believe, the parking structure for having only two spots. Uh, but there's actually enough parking there for four cars, uh, without, uh, impeding, um, uh, maintaining itself within the, uh, lot lines and without impeding the alley in any way.
Okay.
Other comments?
I know, uh, Vidya outlined quite a few items, so look forward to seeing those updates at the next meeting. Um, I think, you know, Dean's comments about needing a way off the roof are valid, so if that can be incorporated um, in making sure that it fits within, you know, the code. Um, but I just want to say this is a really, I, I think well-designed building. It looks very nice. I'm glad to see it being restored and, um, you know, to have have the update that you guys are planning on.
I appreciate your comments, Sarah. Um, and I agree. I think, uh, the home, the owners have done a fantastic job in, in kind of, uh, visualizing the space. I think it'll definitely add, uh, add to this, the town.
Mr. Chair, I would echo the same thing. I think it's, uh, looks very well done. I think it adds a lot of, uh, nice features to the building, bringing them back. And I think it's, uh, certainly enhancement as to what's there. And I too would be interested to hear just about the, the egress issue and absent any objection, I would be all for this project.
Anyone else?
I, I have just a quick question. What, um, what are we normally doing as far as, uh, review letters from building departments or comments? Maybe it's premature because it's at a site plan level, but, um, I guess the last call, you know, this is the second one tonight where we're sort of curious about, um, building code and building issues, things beyond our, our expertise. Um, I guess maybe a question for Vidya. What do we, what do we normally see or what can we expect?
Building official gets involved only after site plan is done, after site plan approval, there is engineering. These are however slightly different because they involve remodeling of an existing structure, which raises questions about compliance with building code. So, um, maybe, um, Lane or Nick can pitch in. Maybe in cases where there is a remodeling of an existing building, planning commission can get a letter from the building official saying that they are okay or the proposed change can cost to building.
Well, well, Vidya, if I may interject, I'm sorry. Um, when I pass out the internal comments and then I submit them to you, the plan was always for you to incorporate, incorporate their comments within your review letter.
I generally always get Sienna, the engineer's comments. I do get the uh, fire department and the police department. I'm not sure I've seen building comments on it, but it might have been.
I submit wh- whoever submits back in a timely fashion before your review letter. Normally, the fire chief, in addition to the engineer, write full-fledged letters. Other than that, the police DPW may just mark it approved with conditions, state their conditions and sign it.
But as you can tell, our, our group craves information, so any that you can pass on to us is, uh, des- desirable and deemed helpful.
Yeah, I, I get Mr. Chair's neck. Guaranteed, real simple fix. Randy, write a report. We, we, just so you know, we send the architects, the petitioners to Randy first so they don't waste all of our time. I understand why you don't take their word for it. You just need to have Randy at the meeting, just invite him. He'll be here, but better than that, in writing to Vidya so she can incorporate it in her report.
That would be great. Very much appreciate that.
Uh, we, it's gonna happen. We could be done a lot better.
Thank you. So, uh, Steve and, uh, and Greg, we, I hear only positive things. I suggest you move forward and, uh,
Dean has a comment for us.
We look forward to formally reviewing it in the future.
All right.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
Uh, since we have Mr. Snyder here, any updates on the North Main project?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I was wondering how long it'd take you to ask me. Uh, we, moving along very well, um, uh, some issues with, uh, AEW getting the engineering done. Uh, we fully expect to have equipment on-site, uh, this month. So, uh, flat building, uh, permits have been submitted. Uh, engineering's been approved. Um, we fully expect to, uh, be moving dirt here shortly.
Any sales?
Uh, we are working with Vito. Um, I don't know if you wanted me to say that out loud. Um, but, uh, we're as a marketing, uh, helping us with our marketing and, uh, so we're, we're actively, um, there's been a lot of interest, uh, from the public, so we, we're, uh, hoping for good things.
Okay, good seeing you both and, uh, good luck with this project.
Thank you for all your support. I, we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. The next item.
Chairman, you need a motion to set this next meeting. Vidya is just about to say that.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion for you to set this for consideration of public hearing at your next meeting.
Okay, somebody make a motion.
I make a motion.
Uh, go ahead.
So Eric made the motion and Sarah supports.
Perfect.
Okay. Any further discussion? The roll call, please. Maureen?
She's on mute.
Sienna, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Um, Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gassen?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Ping?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Thank you, Sienna. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item is number seven miscellaneous, and I'd ask you commissioners if you have anything to bring forward.
Please God, please God, let this one. Are you, am I talking?
Yeah, you're Maureen, you're talking.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. You're back with us?
I have a, I have a comment or question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, I just, you, I know we've talked about the residential lighting. Um, and, you know, I've been getting some calls about the, or about, about the lighting of the apartment building and stuff, but we were going to talk about residential lighting. I, I guess I'm just wondering where, where that is. Is it on our agenda? Is it supposed to come to city council? So I, I guess I'm, I'm just kind of throwing that out there. There's, there is concern or
Are you talking, uh, the, the apartment lighting issue or the single-family, the single family?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, both, but the single-family one, thank you.
Yeah.
For clear, I ju- I just wondered where, where we are in that. I, I know we've, we've talked about it, but I just kind of you know, want to throw that out there to the, to the board because I, I've been getting some feedback on that.
I think our energy at the moment went to the, uh, so-called apartment side of the issue, but yes, we have to pick up on, on, uh, the, uh, the rest of it. the, uh, the rest of it. Uh, Nick, I don't know if you have any update on that?
I, I do, Mr. And to the whole board. So staff's compiling, what we're going to do is send you all a, uh, and city council, a, a questionnaire, if you will, what things in the ordinance or what things in life bother you about lights? Because there's not too many different issues. If we're gonna start down the path of, if I can see a light from seven miles away and you're gonna tell me I can't have that, then we have to, we talked about this before, talk to God to turn off the moon, things like that. And we're gonna have to deal with a lot of different things. So we're gonna put together a smorgasbord for you of potential concerns. We'll give you some, we're researching this right now, some other pilot, uh, um, ordinances from other communities. You've heard a resident talk about some cities went to dark sky. You can have that as an option. If we're gonna tell everybody in the city to turn off every single light in all of our streetlights. There's a practical side to this. We're gonna give you all the information. So staff is piling all the things we can think of. Then we're gonna ask you all what, what things concern you other than I can see lights. You know, that there's two sides. We have the, uh, the police department and public safety folks want to see things light. You heard a resident at one of our meetings talk about, I feel safe when I know there's a light by my back door. So if somebody's not standing there, it, it's gonna be a very uh, genderly dealt with subject, but we will give you all of the options and all of the things that are in lighting from public lighting, private lighting, commercial lighting, all that stuff. And then we'll give you sample ordinances of other things. So it's a big, it's a big, um, report. So I've got two or three departments working on that to get this to you. So we're not gonna just come half-cocked. We're gonna have a lot of information and then you all will weigh in with city council and then we'll go with every direction you all want. And, uh, we'll make it happen. But in the meantime, we are working with the commercial because that was easier. I think when Mr. Bavaca brought that up, we found a solution getting them to voluntarily shield that's working. So now that one's a lot easier to handle, but when you live five feet away from your neighbor and they have a light on, on their back porch, what are we gonna do? So I counted three nine lights on one block coming back from work the other night, and I don't know, that's a tough one. But we have to be consistent. We'll work the attorney, make sure what we're doing isn't getting us in any trouble either. So, um, it's a very complex issue, but we are on it. And I, we suspect we'd have a report for you mid-June.
Mr. Mayor, is that satisfactory for you?
Yeah, I mean, I just, as, as, as long as we're working on it and, you know, making progress, and I know it is a difficult issue. And I just want to make sure it stays on our radar.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Good point. Very good point.
Can I make a quick follow-up comment on that?
Yes, please, Dean.
Um, just so you know, although the apartments have volunteered to, uh, deal with the issue, so far, uh, as far as I can tell, only one light has been shielded.
Yep. Chief's working with them on the overall plan.
Okay.
Okay, work in progress. All right, any other miscellaneous items? Then, uh, we'll go back to number eight, public comment again. Sienna, any other com- communications?
We do not.
Okay. Sienna, you can stay right with it. Upcoming agenda items for May 20th.
Okay, uh, for May 20th, we have the consideration of the addition of portable classrooms at the St. John Lutheran Church and School located at 1011 West University. They are coming back to add a couple more. Um, also, there will be a discussion regarding the preserves of Rochester on the 20th as well. Um, it is just a discussion item. They will be making a presentation and I've asked them to provide us with the copy of the presentation so you guys can look at it and follow it, um, not only from the screen, but actually have the handouts as well.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, and the reason that's a discussion, I'm, that is a PICA. It's zone industrial, so they can't meet the ordinance. So we like, I, we were very cognizant of the last meeting. Don't just have discussion to have it, but the only way for them to move forward would be through a special project. So they, before they spent all that money, they want to bring it forward. Remember, that was one that was, uh, denied officially a few years ago for two towers. So Mr. Lucerco is very aware of everything.
For, uh, for the record, uh, let everyone know what the preserves of Rochester is.
Yeah, so it's the former cement plant site where Mr. Lucerco was denied two residential towers a few years ago. He's now back with a partner. He's bought Van Horn's property. He owns it. So that will be, the business is closed. They'll be getting rid of all the site, all the buses and things on the site very quickly here. Um, and then he's coming in with a, it's, it's a residential complex. If I remember right from the initial meeting with them, I think it's two four-story buildings and then a series of ranch, two-story brownstones, um, on the first floor. So um, we actually gave him the river's edge zoning classification. I had a meet with Vidya, but Vidya's had a detailed conversation with him. We said, if in fact we move forward with the river's edge, this is what the standards are for that. So they can look at it both ways and they are prepared to address it either that way or RM, just to show what, you know, a multiple family would look like. Cause I remember right, the river's edge asked for mixed use and they don't want to put office in this or retail. It's pretty much straight up. I think, um, residential with services on the first floor for residents. But he's got a good presentation. Um, they, they've done a lot of work on it, including being able to address the engineering issues with floodplain, floodway. But he's pretty deep into this already, at least come talk to you. So it won't be just show you one picture and ask what you think.
So this is the old cement plant, the Van Horn Truck Plant. Does it include that third piece that we had the presentation of earlier this year?
Uh, yes, there's a little triangle on the front. There's three pieces though.
The one where we had the four-story.
No, he did not. Nope. That was 250 wind diversion. Nope, that's, he did not purchase that product.
Okay, thank you.
Is that still out there?
No, that, that, that came in at $580 a square foot.
Ouch.
Wow.
We told them that was gonna happen and it did.
Yeah.
Is, so this project that you're talking about, the preserves, would that be adjacent to the, the riverfront place?
Across the river.
Across, no, across the river.
Across the river on the other side. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Very good. That'll, that'll be, uh, another interesting one. Okay, Sienna, is that it for number nine?
Yes, that is all I have.
All right. So any other, uh, business for the commission?
They'll let us know about Thursday for the special hearing?
Yes, I will speak with Randy tomorrow, um, morning and have him draft a letter and he will be present at the meeting.
Yeah, great. If I may, may, so we don't waste your time. If there is nothing imperative about two more weeks, there's no reason to have a special meeting. I appreciate you all being, yeah, I appreciate you all being but kind, but they two weeks, they've already built it and they're asking for this. Then I, I don't see a reason to have a special meeting, waste all your time.
I, I agree. We can actually wait and put that as the first item on the 20th, the 20th as well.
Well, see what happens tomorrow and let us know what you find out.
We can email you either way and let you know.
Thank you very much. Any other business? All right, we'll see you at the next meeting. Stay healthy as usual.
Bye, everybody.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.